Good evening, and thank you for waiting patiently for those of you that have been online. We had a little bit of an audio issue, but it's been fixed. So, thank you for viewing the special meeting of the Arcata City Council. The city council meeting is being held as a teleconference in response to local efforts to reduce the COVID-19 virus. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Atkins Salazar?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Councilmember Watson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Goldstein is absent, but we have a quorum.
Thank you. So, the next item is for public comment. And as this is a special meeting, this time for public comment is for the item that is on the agenda. So, we are not doing that general open public comment that we typically have at the beginning and endings of a meeting. So, if you are interested in providing public comment on the options for filling the vacancy from Vice Mayor Goldstein's resignation, this is your opportunity. So, to do so, please raise your hand if you are on the Zoom webinar or press star nine now. Speakers are limited to three minutes, and when it is your time for public comment, you will be unmuted and invited to speak. All right, our first public speaker is Bob. Go ahead, Bob.
Hi, good evening. This is Rabbi Bob Rottenberg, member of the True North Arcata Local Organizing Committee. We want to acknowledge the creative and innovative work that the Arcata City Council has moved forward on over the last year. We know that you have been diligently working to provide much-needed wraparound services and new housing. As you know, the community is in dire need of basic shelter, very low income, affordable market-rate housing, among other housing and service needs. Additionally, the expansion of Humboldt State into the new Polytechnic University will drastically increase the demand for student housing and services. We are firmly in favor of you quickly appointing someone to the seat being vacated by Council Member Emily Goldstein. This will avoid the expense of a special election and will help to continue the forward progress that you all are making. We encourage you to only consider applicants who are strong supporters of the development of housing, of affordable housing, and wraparound services in our community. Thank you for giving me this chance to weigh in on this topic.
Thank you very much for that comment. All right, our next speaker is Cynthia. Go ahead, Cynthia.
Hello, thank you. This is Cynthia Woods, and I am a deacon at St. Albans Episcopal Church, and I also am a member of True North Local Organizing Committee here in Arcata. We have heard over and over that many businesses and residents are faced with common problems caused by a lack of housing and services for those most in need. We have been encouraged by the recent developments being proposed by the city, including the Gateway Project, the new safe parking area, and the Home Key Developments in Valley West. It is critical that you, as our city leaders, continue to make progress on these important issues facing our community, and therefore, we urge you to fill Council Member Goldstein's seat as soon as possible with another strong advocate for housing and the unhoused in our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Cynthia. All right, I will just make one more call for public comment. As this is a special meeting, this will be the only opportunity to speak on weighing in on how the council chooses to replace Emily Goldstein's position. Please raise your hand now if you have a public comment. I see a couple more. Chris will be our next speaker. Chris, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. Yeah, I just wanted to give my two cents, and I also think it's important that we continue having good coverage with the support that the council is giving us during this time. And I am a proponent for a special election rather than an appointee. I think that it's possible, because we already have one appointed member, that some folks in the community might not like that, and it could turn into a real pan of worms. But anyway, I know there's additional expense. I don't know what that is, but it sounds like there's another election going to happen during that time period, so maybe that can help cover part of the charges. But anyway, that's my two cents, is I think an election in June would probably be a good way to go. Anyway, thank you so much for all you do. I appreciate all of you folks. Take care.
Thank you, Chris. All right, our next speaker is call-in user one. Call-in user, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me? It's Joanne McGreta McGary.
We can.
Okay. I am anxious for a full city council, and if an appointment means that that can happen sooner as opposed to waiting until as long as June for all important issues and need for majority votes, I really, really do hope that the city council will decide in the best interest of all of us in the city and of all the concerns that are happening. So, I guess my leaning is towards an appointment, but maybe not for as long as Vice Mayor Goldstein's position or appointment was for, maybe a shorter appointment. But please do what you can to get a full House and get us moving on some important issues. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Our next speaker is Patricia. Go ahead, Patricia.
Um, yes, I'm definitely for holding a special election. I think there's been, I think it'll bring the trust of the full community. And I know a lot of us in the community are a little bit skeptical of the lack of transparency that has kind of pushed forward with the city lately. So, I think it would just bring a lot of trust back that we kind of are lacking right now. And then, I'd like to say too, that I am also really, uh, what's this? I'm also really happy that you guys have been pushing forward with housing, especially for the lower income. And just because people in the community want to modify the Gateway District Plan doesn't mean that we're anti-housing. So, I just want to put forth, there's a lot of us that feel that the Gateway Area Plan is not an appropriate avenue for actual affordability with housing. So, I like where we've gone so far, and yes, I think I would like to see a special election, just so it's left to the people to decide who fills in that seat. So, thank you so much for all you've done so far, and looking forward to how this goes forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. All right, our next speaker is Jim. Go ahead, Jim.
Hi, hello to the council members. I too feel that it would be good to move forward with the special election for just to have continuity with whoever might be the person elected to that spot. I don't think being until November is enough, because whoever the person is will be seen through to the actual voting, you know, for improving the Gateway Plan. I think it would be good that they have continuity as opposed to somebody coming in new with possibly just a very short period of time. Also, you know, in addition to appointing somebody, which I feel is good, the main thing too with the appointing versus this, you know, would be that allows to be another council member that's active in the decision-making for these months coming forward. And I did, would also out there to, once again, you probably know I was with Patricia, I am pro-housing and I'm pro-affordable housing, not an MB, never really considered myself one. Somehow, that all started a while ago with the beginning of the awareness of this plan. Yeah, beyond that, that's the main thing. I think a special election would be the best way to address, would be the best way to go ahead and address. Did I get cut off?
No, you're good.
Oh, you're still good.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I am seeing no other public comment. Okay, well, thank you for those that did call in with public comment. We definitely appreciate that, as this is a difficult decision to make. So, let's go ahead and jump right into discussion of this. Who would like to, anybody like to start with their thoughts?
We're not going to get into staff report, an explanation of all the options.
Oh, I thought we just bypassed that. Could we please have a staff report? Absolutely, thank you. All right, so I'm going to try to, I'm going to try to make your options clear, as clear as I can. You do have several options ahead of you, and so I will walk through this, come on slideshow from the beginning. So, hopefully, that will come up on your screens. All right, so, filling the city council vacancy. As a quick glance, we will talk through the options for an appointment, which would need to be completed by April 30th, or the options for a special election, which would be held either on June 7th, 2022, or November 8th, 2022. This, the process to fill a vacancy in the city council is governed by Government Code Section 36512. And the basic premise of the code is that if a vacancy occurs, the council shall, within 60 days from the commencement of the vacancy, so from the first day of Emily's vacancy, either fill the vacancy by appointment or call a special election. So, in our current situation, Vice Mayor Goldstein's vacancy will commence on March 1st, and the council has until April 30th to appoint a successor or to call for that special election. The option to appoint, the code offers that if the vacancy occurs in the first half of a term, and at least 130 days prior to the next general municipal election, then the person who's appointed by the council shall hold the office until that next general municipal election. So, in this current situation, we are in the first half of Vice Mayor Goldstein's term, and the date is more than 130 days from the next municipal election, which would be November 8th of 2022. So, what that basically means is that if the council chooses to appoint a candidate, that you could only appoint that candidate until that municipal election in November. You're unable to appoint for the entire term, which would go through November of 2024. Feel free to stop me to ask questions along the way here. So, you have a couple options around special election. The code basically directs that if the council calls for a special election, it shall be held on the next regular established, not necessarily municipal, but a regular, so it could be a county or statewide, that is not less than 114 days. So, and then, the person who's elected would serve out the entire unexpired term. So, to walk through what that looks like in our current situation, the next regular election is the June 7th, 2022 state primary. To add a seat to this ballot, the council would have to call that election, no, it would have to have 114 days before that June 7th date. So, you would have to call that election by February 13th. That is exactly why we are having this meeting tonight, to make sure that you have all the options available to you on the table. If you call a special election after February 13th, which is the council's prerogative, because you do have 60 days with which to appoint or call the special election, but if you were to decide to call that special election after the 13th, that special election would have to fall on the November 8th, 2022 election. So, the county did send us a quick email just yesterday that has estimated the cost to be $7,500 to add the city's seat to the June state primary. Adding it to the November 8th election will also generate some additional cost to the city, but we do estimate it would be slightly less than that full $7,500. However, without having a good sense of what's going to be on that ballot, we couldn't give you any kind of certainty into what that cost would be, because it's really divided by the number of voting options on the ballot. But it does give you a little sense of pricing. So, if you chose the June 7th ballot, you would have to adopt the resolution. There is an option before, in your packet tonight, to consider. And it would just be simple, one item on that ballot. People would choose one of the below candidates. We could have one candidate, we could have 10 candidates for a position on the Arcata City Council for a term that's ending in December 2024. If you ended up waiting and you called for a special election that was going to be on November 8th, there would actually be two options on that ballot. We would have the replacement for this position, which would be, so voters, so first, candidates would choose. They would choose to either run for the one, at that point, two-year seat, or they would choose to run for two of the regularly rotating seats. And so, candidates would make that choice, which to run for. And then, voters would have two options on the ballot that they would be voting for. The first ballot measure would be to pick one candidate for the two-year term. They'd have another ballot item that would pick two candidates for the four-year terms. So, it would look something like this. So, again, at a glance, you can choose to appoint. There is also just sort of a really illustrative outline of what the appointment process would look like in your packets tonight. And if, or you could choose to go special election route. If you want to really shoot for that June 7th, you would need to adopt that resolution before February 13th. And I'm happy to answer questions or go into details on any of those.
It's a little bit complicated for me, and I was hoping we could go over it one more time.
Sure, with the PowerPoint?
Please.
Yeah, we'll just kind of go through it. Okay, so...
Also, did this agenda just come out on Monday?
Yes, I believe it was released on Monday.
Yeah, so, you know, I apologize. I was told by the Assistant City Manager that I had to submit any questions three business days in advance. So, I wasn't able to do that before this meeting.
No, and I would appreciate going through it again, too, and for the public, because it is seemingly, it is, there's a lot of options, and they are kind of confusing. And looking at it, you know, when there will eventually be an election, whether we appoint or not, it's still probably going to be confusing to the public with that, you know, end part you went over. So, thank you for going over it again, Karen.
You bet. Okay, so, at a glance, the council does have both the options of appointment or special election are available to you. Within special election, if you chose that route and acted before February 13th, you could make that onto the June 7th ballot. Oops, that was my slideshow.
Yeah, we're not seeing it up here at least.
Oh. Dylan, can you get my screen back? Oh, because I'm probably not sharing it anymore. So, he cannot help you with that. Okay, let me get back to screen share here. Sorry about that, public. We're going to start over from the beginning. Okay. All right, so we have the options of appointment or special election. All of this, nobody cares what government code this is governed by, but it is 36512, if you want to read all the details. But basically, that code says you have 60 days to choose. You have 60 days to either appoint or to call the special election. So, because, yep, go ahead, Councilmember Matthews.
Unless we decide on the June election, in which case, we have to decide tonight.
Yes.
So, we have 60 days if we want to appoint or have the November election, but if we want to do the June, it's tonight that we have to decide.
Yeah, or by February 13th, but I don't think we're going to have a meeting before then, so.
Yes, exactly. So, at the current vacancy, Vice Mayor Goldstein, her official vacancy will start on March 1st. So, that process, especially if you chose appointment, would have to be completed by April 30th. If you chose to appoint, because the vacancy is occurring in the first half of the term, you are only allowed by law to appoint until the next general municipal election. And so, that would be, so if you made an appointment, you could make that appointment for whatever period you want, but no longer than November, that November election, when we were to seat somebody who would be elected in that November election.
So, that person that we appointed ostensibly would be in their seat from April 30th until November 22nd, so for a very short time, and then would have the option to rerun again in November for a term that ends in 2024, which is, was the original end of Vice Mayor Goldstein's term, correct?
Yep.
Wouldn't they finish out the year, wouldn't it be December 30th?
It'd be, like, whenever we swear in that, the person that's elected in that date. Yeah. Okay, so, it is true that the vacancy is in that, is in that first half, but because it is more than 130 days to the municipal election, and because it is more than 114 days from the next general election, you could choose the special election on either of those dates. So, if you choose the option of a special election, then you would have to call that, if you wanted to go for the earlier date, June 7th, you would have to call that election 114 days prior, which is February 13th. So, there's a resolution, you call an election by resolution, and there is a copy of the resolution you would need to pass in your packets tonight if you want to consider that option. Councilmember Schaefer?
But, so, then, no matter what, though, if we hold any special or let it go to the next municipal election in November, candidates will have to choose to either be on the two-year, finishing out the two-year term, or the four-year term of the separate seats.
Absolutely correct. So, if we, if we have a special election to fill the remainder of Vice Mayor Goldstein's seat on the November ballot, there will be two options on that ballot that voters will be voting on. One option on that ballot, or one item on that ballot, would be the two-year seat. One item on that ballot would be the two regularly rotating four-year seats currently held by Councilmember Matthews and Councilmember Watson. So, candidates would choose to run for either the four-year seats, of which the highest two vote-getters will be placed into those seats, or they could choose to run for the one two-year seat. And we did have this on a ballot several years ago, when Shane Britton stepped down, and it went to the next municipal election. Because of the timing, I think that was the only option available to the council. And then, candidates chose to either run for the two-year seat or run for one of the two four-year seat options. So, yeah, so the ballot would look something like this, what's up on the screen. I'll stop here for a second and just make sure that makes sense to everyone.
Can I, can I make a suggestion?
You bet.
It seems like a lot of the feedback that I've been hearing and from what we've heard tonight, that there are two options that most people would like, would either be an appointment or a special June election. So, I think that maybe we should kind of focus on those two. I think the urgency of getting someone on the council is probably urgent enough that we could have either one of those two and kind of maybe not spend so much time discussing, discussing waiting till November.
Well, but even if we choose to appoint, that person still has to run again in November, correct? So, I mean, still looking at this ballot, we're going to, you know, still encounter the fact that voters and candidates will have to choose, you know, that seat, which I think does create some of the confusion we're feeling, and probably the public, too. But, yeah.
Okay, so, let me clarify that if you did choose a special election for June, that the candidate that received the most votes in that June election would fill out the entire term. If you fill this by special election, whenever that election is, then that candidate would fill out until November, December of 2024.
So, how do they, so Meredith and I would have to run in June?
No, 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 no. So, your two seats are through November of 2022, period. Those are your regular rotations. So, this would be just adding just the one, two, it'd be like two-and-a-half-year term. It would just be only adding the vacancy term on the June election. That would be the only, it would look just like the ballot option in front of you here. This is what would be on the June 7th ballot.
The person that runs in June would finish till 2024. If we ran again and got elected, our term would end in 2026.
Correct.
I thought you said that the voters will have two options. One would be to fill the term or to run for our seats.
That would be for November. That would be the November election, where there would be two options. The first option would be to finish out Emily's term. No.
Yes, yes.
And then, the second option would be our two vacant seats.
And let me try a different language. There'd be two ballot measures. There would be two ballot voting options, right? One ballot measure would just be for the two-year term, and then, one ballot measure would be for the two four-year terms, right? So, I guess to explain it, somebody, like, it seems somewhat reasonable that you would just have, we have three positions open. We have two that go through 2026, and we have one that goes through 2024. The top two vote-getters get the 2026 date, and the third highest vote-getter would go into the 2024 date. I don't even want to say that publicly, because that's not how the state law works. Instead, we would have the two positions that are four years, that go through 2026, that are completely filled right now. Those two positions would be on the ballot as normal through 2026. There would be a completely separate ballot item, ballot measure, that voters would vote on, that would cover the two-year term. So, if you're a candidate in the November election, interested in running for council, as a candidate, you're going to make a choice. I'm going to run for the two-year term, or I'm going to run for the four-year term. And you can't run for both.
So, then, how do they fill the two-year term?
Unless we elect in June, in which case, they don't have to do anything in November. They're on till 2024.
But how would we fill the two-year term if they pick the four-year term?
Well, somebody would have to pick the two-year term, and whoever that is, and whoever wins that gets that two-year term.
But I thought the voters decided to get it.
Well, yeah, they're, they're running for it. It's an election.
You can either put yourself on the ballot for 2026, or put yourself on the ballot for 2022. And then, down here, would be you and Meredith, running for the four years. And whoever else. So, people would choose if they want to run against you for four years, or if, or if they just want to run two years. So, we'd need people to run for both of us, which is kind of confusing.
Yeah, I mean, if it's, yeah, if it's confusing to us, I think it's obviously going to be confusing to the public, too. But you did say, Karen, right, this has happened before, and so, I guess people might be used to it, but...
Yeah, so, this would have been the election, so, in the four-year term, I don't know how, exactly how many candidates we had, but that would have been Sofia Pereira's first term and Mark Wheatley's last term. And then, in the two-year term, and I think we had at least four candidates, maybe, that ran for those two four-year terms. And then, to fill out Shane Britton's term, we had two candidates, as I recall. It was Paul Patino and one other candidate, and Paul received the most votes in those that chose to run for that two-year term, and he filled out the remainder of that term and then ran again.
Yeah, I'm still having trouble understanding it, so, you know, I need more time to process it.
Okay, I think you're exactly right, that you have to find, I mean, we would have to have candidates step up to run for that two-year seat. And if we had no candidates that stepped up to run for that two-year seat, then that would be coming back to the council again for appointment. I mean, we've had a lot of interest, so I don't foresee that as being a reality, but if it were, then if nobody ran for that two-year seat in June or November, then it would come back to the council to reconsider appointment.
Yeah, I, I understand, and I think that really, we need to talk about either an appointment or electing, or having a special election in June to run towards, to the end of Emily's term 2024.
Do you know what the, sorry, go ahead, finish.
Just because I think consistency is really important, and getting someone on obviously is important to a lot of people, so having someone elected in June would still give them, you know, two-plus years on the council, plenty of time, you know, to get up to speed and make some important decisions coming up. Appointment would be the same, they would be appointed, well, appointment would be different, because if they are appointment, if they're appointed, they end in November, November election, and they'd have to run again. So, honestly, my preference, or what I think would be best, just because, I mean, in all fairness, having two appointed people on the council, I think, is a little, especially for a council that has been really, really trying to focus on public engagement, I think appointing someone would probably not be the best thing to do. I think putting it out to the public would probably be the best thing, and having it sooner than later to run for a full two-year And, um, having it sooner than later to run for a full two years, that would be my, that would be what I would prefer to do.
What do you think about the difference in voter turnout between the June and November election?
I mean, it's hard to say. I feel like a lot of people are really engaged, we've had a lot of engagement, there's a lot of important things on the ballots that are coming up. I, you know, people are engaged, I mean, who knows? You know, the last election was a really crowded field because it was a big election, you know? And 2022, it's a midterm election, who, I mean, you really can't anticipate, but I do really feel, there's some other important things on the ballot in June. I mean, there's the election supervisor, there's some important things. People should vote, vote!
Yeah, I think historically, the data shows that a June election has, um, you know, kind of well below voter turnout. Um, that's, you know, always been my understanding. So you get a lot less participation in the June election than you do in the November election, especially in the year that's off of a presidential election.
And that's, and that's great, but do we really want to wait until November to fill?
Yeah, I don't see what's so urgent. Um, to me, you know, I'm kind of leaning towards the greatest public participation possible. Um, I don't feel a sense of urgency. You know, I feel like there's not going to be any problems getting a majority vote on this council for decisions. Um, so, yeah, those are some of my thoughts. You know, my, my second choice would be a June special election.
Yeah, I feel like the public has voiced a sense of urgency. I've gotten a lot, we've gotten calls, I've had a lot of emails, sense of urgency. I mean...
Yeah, I was just going to add too, I think that, again, the, the clarity of it for having it on the June ballot, which is already, you know, a, a pretty large-scale state primary, that I, I think if people vote and they are voters and they are engaged in local or state or national politics, they usually will vote in both. Um, maybe I'm, you know, speaking for myself, but, um, and I also just think the clarity of, you know, being able to have even on a separate ballot, a separate election, you know, this seat is running for, you know, to the end of Emily's term, to the end of Council, Vice, Vice Mayor Goldstein's term, right? Um, to have just that one thing on that ballot is a lot more clear to the public. I also think that, you know, announcing it now will really actually excite the public and recharge a lot of people. Um, the people that are ready and know that they already maybe want to run in November might jump on it now and, and get involved. And, you know, those who maybe don't win that might feel, you know, charged up enough and excited to want to run in November. And so I think just for, for clarity of the ballot for the public, June, to me, makes the most sense because it is, you know, it'll be a single thing on the ballot to decide for the Arcata City Council, rather than that confusion of having to choose between that two and four-year seat. Um, I also think it will get us more passionate candidates who want to run now and are ready because really, you know, if and when we make this decision, it's going to start. Um, because, you know, June isn't that far away. And, and to see, you know, that we could have that seat filled by the end of June, rather than, you know, taking staff time to get the appointment process going, our time to get the appointment process going. I know we have a lot of meetings, you know, coming up with goal-setting, with gateway meetings. It's, you know, a lot of pressure to think about an appointment with that as well. Um, and so I really think that the clearest option for the public, the quickest option for, you know, what I also have felt from the public, a sense of urgency and a sense of wanting to participate publicly, right? To, to not appoint because we as a community want to participate in an election, I think that June will be the best for that.
And I'll just, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. Um, I'm just wondering if you could share some thoughts with me on why it's urgent? Anybody?
Well, one, um, so I just wanted to jump in because I have a couple of thoughts. So I, I do, I am on the June, um, the June election bandwagon. Um, I've given this a lot of thought, um, prior to this meeting, and when, when looking at it, um, I, I really think, I don't think we should appoint. I think we're all maybe kind of on that same page, it seems like. Um, I think we did a great job appointing Councilmember Matthews, but two appointments in such a short period of time is probably not going to sit well with people in the public, especially ones that have issues with us. And I'd like to think everybody was happy and felt we were doing a great job, but that's not the reality, and there are people that, um, you know, might not trust us. They might, you know, feel like we're loading up the council in a way that they don't approve of. So I do think it needs to go to the public for a vote. Um, it's not that much more expensive, and I think it eliminates the confusion. Part of the, the urgency that I see, um, I, up to this point, am not able to participate on gateway decisions because of where I live. Um, and there has been speculation about that, so I just want to make it super clear that right now I am voluntarily recusing myself until we hear back from the FPPC for a final decision. Um, but I live literally across the street from the car wash, which is the gateway. And so, it's, so I, if I'm having to recuse myself, which I will at least for a while until we hear, that's going to leave three decision-makers if we don't put it on the June ballot. And I just think, and I just feel like decisions like the gateway and that stuff that we're coming up, I feel like that's a heavy lift for three people, and it would be nice to have a fourth person. So that's kind of where I'm coming from.
I can just say, and maybe Brett, I mean, you can probably agree with me too, like, we were both appointed to start our careers. And while I was completely honored and love being appointed, it will mean so much more to me in November if I can be elected by, you know, the city and know that it was the city that chose me. So that's why I am pretty passionate about having an election.
All right, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 212-43, calling for a special municipal election to be held June 7, 2022.
I'll second that.
I think we just do need to add that you accept the resignation of Councilmember Goldstein and declare a vacancy on the Arcata City Council.
That'd be great. You'll take that friendly amendment?
Okay.
As well as accept the resignation of Councilmember Emily Goldstein, effective March 1, 2022. And, um, you know, I do express my condolences to her. I hope everything works out well for her. Um, I think a lot of people didn't expect her to last that long, so I'm glad she was able to do what she did.
I will second that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Watson and a second by Councilmember Matthews. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the motion passes unanimously. Okay, so that, um, so just, so, just to make sure that the public does know what we did, because sometimes, you know, it can get a little bit lost, as though we are going , um, forward with that special election to be held on June 7th. And so it'd be great to have, you know, a big, nice pool of candidates out there, and whoever runs and wins for that term will be able to finish out Vice Mayor Goldstein's entire term, which is about two and a half years. And so that means when it comes to the November election, there will simply be two spots, and that'll be a little bit less confusing. So that's what we're going to do. So thank you for those who participated in public input, and, um, thanks to the rest of the council. Meeting adjourned.